At this time, I'll call the April 17, 2023 County Council Meeting to Order. I want to welcome everyone here tonight. I'll recognize the Honorable Tom Odette from District One, who will lead us in the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we come to you asking for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. Help us engage in meaningful discussion, allow us to grow closer as a group, nurture the bonds of the community. We also pray for safe travels during the spring season and enjoying the time with our family and friends. It is in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the following members who will be sworn into oath tonight. If you'll come forward when I call your name and stand in front of the podium, you'll be met with our county attorney, who will swear you in. Andy Clinton, Old English District; Peter McBean, Newport Firetaps District Board; Heather Osborne and Brooke, well, Heather Osborne, Keep York County Beautiful, District Five; and Brooke Gills, Keep York County Beautiful at Large. And on behalf of council, we do want to say thank you for your volunteer service. You oftentimes give this up, give up your time and give up your efforts without any thanks and certainly without any pay. But the citizens of the community certainly appreciate all the work that you put in to do this, and we couldn't do it without you. Thank you again for serving. At this time, we're going to recognize, council and staff are going to recognize Joe Simpson on his retirement and service with York County. Looks like you've got a good crowd with you there.
First of all, I'd like to thank County Council for presenting or allowing or recognizing those who are retiring from their service with the county. I've had an opportunity to work with Mr. Simpson for quite some time, and I think that anybody who has served, whether you've played sports, whether you've served in the military, whether you've done law enforcement, you know that people that you serve with are very, very important and that you can depend on. And Mr. Simpson has been so dependable. Not only has he been very dependable, he's been a very good friend. When you look at Mr. Simpson and you look at our staff regarding constables, he's probably one of the hardest-working men that I've ever been around. Not only is he one of the hardest-working men that I've ever been around, he's also one of the strongest men that I've been around. And when I say strongest, I'm not talking about lifting weights and flipping over tires, but I'm talking about just his mental fortitude in reference to enduring life struggles. He's lost two wives due to cancer. He's fought cancer himself. He's been through a great deal, and he's going to be truly, truly missed. I can't say enough great things about him. I know every morning when he comes into work, he comes in and he greets me. And my day really is not complete unless he does that. So without going any further and prolonging the council meeting, I know you guys have a lot on the agenda. Mr. Simpson, our staff, his family that are here, Mr. Simpson, I just want to tell you how greatly it has been for you to to be a role model to so many of us for what it means to work hard and also to be a great person. And I just want to thank you for everything you've done for us, and I thank you for the things that you'll be doing also in our community. I want to share a quick story with you. This is Mr. Joe Simpson. Sometimes people run, as is the saying, sometimes people run too. Either the, I guess, the war or the fight, and some people run away from it. One day, we were all searching, or at least I was, searching for Mr. Simpson in our courthouse. Yeah, somebody knows where I'm going with this. He was nowhere to be found. I can hear pff, pff while I was in the courtroom, presiding over court. There were tires blowing up and things. There were, maybe I'm getting too of the ones, maybe confused, but I know that one of the ones that you were, and we come to find out, Mr. Simpson was out in the middle of the road. He had left the courthouse to go and help people who were harmed or being hurt. And that's just the type of person that Mr. Simpson is, and that's the type of person that we will all miss in our office. And so, Mr. Simpson, on behalf of County Council, they are presenting you with a clock. It states here, Joseph L. Simpson, April 22, 2013 to May 1, 2023, in appreciation of your dedication and service, York County.
I'm not wanting to talk much. It's just, it's been a pleasure working with these people back here. They're my other family. I love them all to death. I'm really going to miss them. In fact, I've been told I need to come by every night again and see them. Shannon may call, want a Dr. Pepper or something every night again. I always bring her one, but it's good. You know, I'm going to be, I'm really going to miss them, and I really enjoyed my time with the county. Thank you very much.
Mr. Simpson, on behalf of the council, we want to say thank you for your service with the county. It speaks volumes to have this many coworkers come spend their time to come recognize you. And I know that we will sorely miss you at the county, but we wish you the best in your retirement. We hope you get some time to spend on yourself. And thank you again for your service.
Thank you very much.
At this time, I recognize Andy Clinton, President and CEO of Visit York County, to provide an annual update.
So, good evening. So, Andy Clinton with Visit York County. Just want to give you guys, it's been an interesting, a busy, busy year for myself as far as transitioning to, I've been with Visit York County for 10 years, and transitioning to a little over a year ago in the interim role as President/CEO, and then this past October, removing the interim tag off. So, a busy year for Visit York County. And some of you not familiar with Visit York County, but some of you are, so give you a quick, kind of 101 as far as for Visit York County and what we've been up to this past year. So, kind of the 101 are the background parts. So, we are tourism for York County. So, anything as far as recruiting events to the area, trying to bring visitors to restaurants, promoting Carowinds via our website or social media pages, we are under a board of commission through York County. So ultimately, I report to a 15-member board. I have two of my exec members behind me. So, they've been, they've been great to work with. And Brown Simpson has been my board chair for this past year, and I cannot thank him enough for all the support that he's given me as far as this transition this past year. Ultimately, I report to the board, who then report to you guys. So, we have 15 members, eight at large, seven by district. And ultimately, our priorities for York County, one, increase York County accommodations and hospitality tax. So, that's your hotels, that's your restaurants. That's ultimately how we're funded. Eighty, ninety percent of our funding is hotel-generated. So, that's what we want to do. We want to continue to increase that hotel tax, to continue to increase the restaurant tax. Two, market all of York County as a tourism destination. So, anywhere from, you know, downtown Rock Hill, up to Kingsley, Carowinds, Brattonsville, our farms, you name it. So, make sure that we market the entire county as a tourism destination. Support York County businesses. That's important. We want to make sure that we support our restaurants, support, like I said, our hotels. Those are vital to us surviving. Then, the visitor experience. We want to make sure our website, all of our platforms, that we cater to the visitor. Quick look at our staff. So, we have six, myself, Mallory, who she'll speak more on our marketing efforts, but Mallory and Kaylin head up our marketing team. Allison and Jordan head up our sales, event services partnerships. So whether that be our hotel membership program, recruitment of events, servicing of events, anything from, you know, at a soccer event to at a festival. And then Andrew Vincent started with us in August, and he's our finance and administration. One important concept for you guys, kind of to grasp as far as, so SCPRT put this out there, that each of the nearly 2 million households in South Carolina pay $760 less in state and local taxes as a result of taxes generated by the tourist spending. So, tourists are, and I think a few of you were actually at the York Electric Economic Development Session that they had at Breakfield. So, they kind of went over this as well. I'd argue there's not a better taxpayer in York County than a visitor. So, it's great for, to bring somebody in. They're staying at a hotel, and they're paying York County taxes. So, that's a great concept that we want to continue. Give you guys a brief overview as far as hotel performance and trends. As you guys can kind of see, the green line is 2023, but this is calendar year. Occupancy, you can kind of see where 2021, obviously, that was COVID. So, but we've continued to, 2019 was really peak years as far as tourism, really across the country. And we're striving to get back to that. And I think we, you can see that from occupancy. And then ADR is your average daily rate, so what somebody spends per night for a hotel. So, we are actually surpassing that, which is phenomenal, that we're continuing to trend in the right direction. And then here's just a quick kind of list of events, whether esports was out at Carowinds. So, the sport of video games to basketball, to track and field, the disc golf championships. We help out with that. But we're close to $1 million in direct economic impact. We're at $99 million for 2022 for the calendar year. So, that continues to go up as we continue to move out of COVID. But yeah, as you guys can see, that we continue to have events throughout the county, on the lake, at high schools, local middle schools. And hopefully, I'm actually meeting with Catherine Jones. She's great. She's a phenomenal hire from the county. But for the County Parks and Rec, meeting with her just to discuss how we can better help out with County Parks and Rec, whether that's marketing, Catawba Bend, Ebenezer Park. So, continuing to build that relationship. Then I'm going to turn it over to Mallory. She's better suited on the, on the marketing side.
All right, well, good evening. For those of you who I have not met, my name is Mallory Snyder. And as Andy mentioned, I'm over at Communications and Development for Visit York County. So, I'll just give you an overview, and then I'm happy to answer any questions at the end. We look at our marketing through a couple of different avenues. We use paid search, digital display, social media, both organic and paid. And then we often host influencers and travel writers. It's a big part of what we do. Key demographics for us, we look at the married with school-aged children who enjoy an active lifestyle while they're traveling. So, you think families coming in for a sports event, what else is there to do here? Those boomer-aged couples who enjoy leisure activities. And then obviously, the craft beer lover and outdoor enthusiasts. Quickly, just some key markets that we look at. Charlotte is a new target for us. I think a lot of people don't realize what is in their backyard. Raleigh, Greensboro, Atlanta, Northern Virginia. We also get a lot of organic traffic from New York. So, we're looking at these metrics constantly on our website and evaluating where we're putting our marketing dollars. And I think I have the clicker here. So, again, website and social media, these numbers continue to grow year over year. So, we're really proud of the work that we've put in and the results that we continue to see. If you are not subscribed to our Yoko Buzz newsletter, I would highly encourage you to do that. Kaylin on our team does a great job putting that together every week. It's just a quick rundown of all the things to do in York County for visitors, residents targeted at visitors, but it's a great resource for residents looking to just get out and do something different for their weekend. So, 14,000 subscribers to that. We have a 54% open rate. I'm sure many of you have your own newsletters. That's a really plugged-in group of people. So, we're really proud of that. And again, continue to see that grow. I wish this reel would play for you on the left side of your screen, but it's just an example of one of the many reels TikToks that we put together that continue to keep folks plugged in. So, our Destination Guide, which hopefully you all have a copy of, this is our largest annual publication. We are fortunate to partner with York County Economic Development on a lot of different projects for this issue. And last year was the first year we did this. We partnered with them to include a dedicated relocation guide. So, we know that a lot of people that are visiting the area are also potentially looking at moving here, moving their business here. So, this is a great partnership, and we're excited to continue to see that to grow. So, 30,000 copies of this are printed every year. We send this around the country. It's a great resource, and we're happy to provide copies to whoever needs any. You know, we work with Clover School District for HR purposes, recruiting teachers, you name it. A lot of folks are using this. So, it's a great piece. Some key initiatives for us. So, our Yoko Brew Trail, again, the craft beer scene here continues to grow, which is amazing. We have 14 craft breweries. So, our Yoko Brew Trail functions in a physical passport format. You get 10 stamps along the way, and you get a prize at the end from our office of Visit York County. People love this. It is pocket size. Andy has tested it. It fits right in your pocket, gentlemen. And so, it's just a great way to keep people engaged if they already are here or entice them to come and visit and spend dollars and experience something new. And then our Yoko Taste Trail Week. We used to host just a Yoko Taste Trail throughout the entire year. And we recently transitioned this format into a week-long initiative similar to Queen's Feast in Charlotte. This is a free resource for restaurants, so we don't charge them. We simply push folks through their doors in the week leading up to when school starts, which is when we've been told that they need the business the most. So, that was really successful. Again, last year was the first year that we did that, and we'll continue to continue that this year and hopefully into the future. Industry support. So, for us, you know, it's not our job to talk about Visit York County necessarily. It's our job to promote our partners and talk about all the amazing things that they're doing and why folks would want to come here. So, just a couple of examples. You'll see Chef Rob with Counter One, the South Carolina State Chef Ambassador. That was a huge honor. That was something we nominated him for in partnership with the Old English District. You'll see Ag and Art. We're doing the marketing again for that, which is a great event every year. It's a model for the state of South Carolina. So, just continuing to make our hotels, restaurants, and attractions the forefront of our messaging. Again, hosting media, travel writers. If we are not holding a writer's hand while they are here, we are making sure that they have itineraries and that they're able to see and experience the entire county and talk about it appropriately. Workforce development. We are by no means leading this lane. A lot of great folks are working on this, but we are supporting a lot of different organizations when it comes to workforce. I think hospitality and hotels and restaurants continue to be potentially more impacted than some other sectors. So, last year, we hosted a couple of roundtables with our educational partners and our industry partners to get them together to say, what are your challenges? What are the solutions that could come of this conversation? And are there resources and tools available that you're potentially not utilizing? So, those meetings were successful, and we continue to do things like that just to support, you know, our industry partners that are here. That's all for me. Again, I'm happy to answer any questions, and I will turn it back over to Andy.
Any questions?
Yeah, so I just want to, first of all, say, you guys are really done a great job here. How you approaching it from a local business and promoting the area. Nice work on this. Actually, I put in your YorkCounty.com website into my newsletter, and people have come back to me and said that they're using it multiple times to find out what's going on in the area. And new people that have moved in have referred to it. So, again, I just want to give you those kudos.
Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's important for us that, yes, our budget is funded by the tourists, and ultimately, our job is to cater towards the tourists. But it's important, like a quote that a lot of tourism organizations use, is community shared values. That, yes, we're coming up with our website and our brew trail, that it's geared towards the tourists, but it's also great for the local citizen can take advantage of us as well.
Well, I've gotten quite a few testimonials back, so good job.
Mr. Ollie.
And I know you're taking over and was coming in kind of in the middle of, I would say, somewhat of a turmoil as to how we're going to fund CVB Visit York County. For you stepping into that role, how has the funding source been hotel-based? How has that worked out? And are you able to still do some of the things that you want to do budget-wise? Are we good, we short, we need to work on it? Where are you at on that?
Yeah, I mean, I'd say we're in good shape, obviously. We want to strive to continue to increase our budget just as, you know, as the county continues to increase, just like any other municipality. Visit Myrtle Beach has their budget size a lot larger than ours. But, you know, we always want to strive to increase. And obviously, in my mind, I view as accommodations continue to increase, the hotel tax and restaurant tax continue to increase, I would hope that our organization grows with that. So.
Well, if there's ever a time that we can't fund an event or something that you want to do because the money's not coming in, definitely come back and let us know, because we don't want to not support events coming to York County and not be able to recruit events. So, coming up short with that model, definitely let us know.
Yeah, I did want to shout out, Bump was a huge help down there at the left, the Turf King Invitational. And honestly, that came from, Bump gave me a call as far as, hey, I have somebody that's interested in hosting a football event. It started with a phone call, you remember, and it turned into, the phone call turned into this high school football event. It was for the top teams in the Carolinas, 10,000 people at District Three Stadium, probably.
Just shouting.
Probably the most, I mean, that was the most spectators at District Three in 10, 20-plus years. So, and it built, turned into the Good Morning America, the Football City USA. It all kind of came from that event, and it started with a phone call. So, definitely want you guys to reach out to me if you ever have any ideas as far as events or initiatives. My card's in there, so please don't hesitate to reach out to me.
Any other questions or comments? Andy, I want to thank you for the work that you do. I know I speak for others. I constantly get compliments of how well you guys are doing. To me, the best comment is from Samuel Hall at Bush &amp; Vine and how much they appreciate the work that you do to help keep them in business and to promote their activities. That's just one of the many small businesses that I think you helped. We appreciate you being here, the work you're doing.
Well, I appreciate y'all's support. Thank you.
Thank you. We are going to move now to our public forum session. This is an opportunity for citizens to sign up and to come speak to us and for us to listen. And we only have one person who signed up tonight. So, when I call your name, if you'll come up and give your address. And it's L. Allen. I didn't get a first name. Would you like to come and speak and address the council? Oh, okay. All right. Well, thank you for being here tonight. Do we have a motion for consent agenda? I will say that item number two needs to be moved to item number one. In old business, there were some tweaks that staff had recommended for some changes on that. So, other than item number two that needs to be moved, is there anything else that needs to be moved from consent?
No, approve consent agenda with the removal of item number two.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We move now to our first public hearing. Counsel to hold a public hearing and consider third reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 155 zoning code to allow schools as permitted use in the AGC, AGC One, and OI districts to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters relating thereto. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against?
Move to close.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed. Do you have a new motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I thought you were going to speak, Tim. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We move now to our second public hearing. Counsel to hold a public hearing and consider third reading of an ordinance to abandon, extinguish, and release any and all rights, title, and interest in a 10-foot sewer easement burdening a portion of Tax Map Number 72300079, recorded in deed Book 826, Page 82, and depicted in plat Book 77, Page 180 in the Office of Register of Deeds of York County, and is shown with particularity in the easement abandonment plat before council to take such action as may be needed to formally abandon the easement to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters related thereto. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone who wishes to speak against?
Move to close.
Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, public hearing is closed.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We move now to item number three. Counsel to hold a public hearing and consider third reading of an ordinance to abandon, extinguish, and release any and all rights, title, and interest in a permanent easement from Springland, Inc. to York County filed in record Book 3807, Page 113 in the Office of Register of Deeds of York County to take such other action as may be needed to formally abandon the easement to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other matters related thereto. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in favor? Is there anyone here who wishes to speak against?
Move to close.
Second.
Motion and a second to close public hearing, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Move now to number two, which was pulled out of consent, rezoning action, consider third reading case number 23-04, tax map number 66600002325, to rezone from UD to LI, 5.064 acres in District Five. We have a motion to defer that item and I appreciate that. I'm requesting that, we have staff wanted to tweak some of those changes and I haven't had a chance to look at it and the applicant submitted an updated plat after the agenda was submitted. So this will get, I understand they're not in a hurry and so we have a little bit of time to, to get those tweaks figured out. All those in favor of deferral say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. We move now to first item in new business, council to approve recommended changes to the York County Fire Service stipend program.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Ms. Roddy.
I was contacted by chief of my district and how is this going to affect or will this get them to where they need to be with? I know we went to a per call basis now. Is there enough funding in that, that pot of money for them to achieve what they've been trying to do with increasing the per call rate?
I'm not aware that there was any specific target for that. The money's always just been allocated by council, it's divided by the number of calls that they answer and whatever that amount is per call gets allocated out for each call each member goes on. So I mean, I'm, I'm sure they would always like it to be more, but I don't, I don't know that we have a specific target for what that indivi, that individual amount per call would be.
When, and I, I know it was brought to my attention to, to raise this question, when was the last time that has been increased? I was told, it's been a while since that pot of money's increased.
Well, uh, this was, and Kevin can correct me on the history on this if, if he needs to, but I think it was, uh, it was the similar amount to what we paid toward their retirement program several years ago. They asked not to be, uh, not to be included in the retirement program, but to receive a paper call to be paid out each year. That was set at $150,000. In addition to that, we have to pay some county benefits that go along with that. So council kicked in another $30,000 to help cover those benefits. So it's about $180,000 now, so if that was an increase, is that?
Yeah, I think it was about 30, 35,000 increase a couple of years ago going towards that.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll follow back up with you guys on some of the other questions that, that has come up.
Is that funding from general fund, where's the funding from?
Rural fire tax.
So was the, the proposed increase from the budget workshop, did that include? I'll just echo the questions that Mr. Roddy has asked, is, I think the, what has been, I've had folks in my district reach out as well and just say, is there an opportunity to increase that to, um, at all? From my understanding, there hasn't been an increase since 2002.
No, the increase was about two years ago, the 35,000 we talked about, I went from 150 to about 185. I don't remember any discussion about increasing that at the budget workshop. I do believe.
So we're at 185, not 150.
Correct, yes ma'am.
Thank you.
But if that's going to cover another expense, but the true net increase to go to pay per call hadn't increased, I can't think that's.
That, that net increase was driven by the chief's desire to get the cash rather than going towards retirement. So the expense to the taxpayers increased 35,000, you know, I, they have the retirement benefits and everything else associated with that. I can attest to the, the dollar amounts that they're each individual bringing home for being the, because they get W2s now from the county, part-time firefighters. Mr. Russell might can get into the details about how their average pay is now or whatnot.
Kevin, where would, if we were to increase that, where would that money come, where would the increase come, funding come from?
The Rural Fire Board.
Did the, did the chiefs, where, where did, did the chiefs vote on that, the, the chiefs committee vote on that?
No, I don't think there was any vote held, not, not at any, not at the Fire Advisory Committee, not any meeting I've attended. They, they have a separate chiefs meeting that, that's possible, I don't know. Morris, you want to address that?
We started in November, working on our budget. And we talked about it almost every month until last month where we approved our budget. Uh, it was never mentioned until after the budget was approved by the Fire Advisory Committee. But it has been approved by the Fire Advisory Committee, what we have in place at this point. As far as the fire chiefs, I don't know if any votes been taken at the fire chiefs.
Thank you. Any other questions? All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Move now to number two, council to ratify an emergency procurement with State Utility Contractors, Inc. for the emergency sewer force main bypass and repair for a total cost of $582,246.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Committee and other reports, Finance and Operations Committee Chairwoman, Alce Love.
Thank you. The Finance and Operations Committee met on April the 10th and present were members, council members Tom Atkins and Tom Aldette and myself. We had a discussion, the only thing on our agenda was the discussion about the proposed human resources ordinance, ordinance modifications. And our county manager, David Hespa, provided us with a copy of the opinion from the county's labor law attorney and a copy of the Red Line version so that we could see, see the differences there. We actually did get the attorney on the, on the phone, we were able to ask his questions. And in the end, the motion was made by Councilman Aldette and seconded by Councilman Atkins and that motion carried. So we are in support of that, that ordinance.
All right, thank you, Ms. Love. Uh, citizen concerns, we do not have any, I believe. Councilmember, no non-agenda comments?
Yeah, I think we skipped this section last.
Ms. Roddy, we'll start with you.
I got a double dose for this week. Now, um, actually, I think at one of our prior meetings on the tele and we mentioned about not knowing what types of businesses we have located in our unincorporated areas. And I think that shifted over for us to at least start to have the conversation as to what can we develop? What kind of system can we develop that has businesses that located in the unincorporated areas be on some kind of roll registration with York County? I know we've had the conversation several years ago about a business license. Some people oppose that, but if someone calls up to York County and says, how many XYZ businesses you have in the unincorporated areas? We have no idea who's located within the walls of our York County in the unincorporated areas. They would have to call the city, they would have to call each individual city, municipality to find out how many they have in Rock Hill, York, Fort Mill, Clover. But that doesn't speak to what's in the unincorporated areas. One of the things that, that came up at the March 20th meeting that I wasn't here, Dr. Dave Keely came and was talking about the vape shops. I spoke with him this week and that's wanted to use that for an example. We don't know how many vape shops are in York County. We know how many ABC stores, we know how many all these other entities that's in Rock Hill, Fort Mill, Clover. But if someone wanted to know what's located just inside the borders of York County unincorporated, we have no idea to tell them, we have no number. How many Pizza Hut's in an unincorporated area? We don't know. How many Walgreens, how many drugstores, how many dry cleaners, how many, you know, that may be something someone's looking to evaluate when they're looking to move here. What's, what all is in the area, what's in the unincorporated areas? So I think we can at least have the discussion as to how do we create some kind of, uh, York County list that includes what's in York County? I think that's worth at least having a discussion, whether we go the route of a flat registration fee or just make it free. Because it will give us an idea of what we have inside of York County. I would love to just roll it out absolutely free, give businesses opportunity to say, hey, we're in York County. And they may show up on the list that, um, the CVB just showed us, things that's going on in York County. So I'd like to see what, if anything, we can do along those lines to have that discussion in the near future.
I would just say on the surface, it does make sense, you brought it up tonight, so we might as well comment on it. I think it does make sense and I'd be interested to hear more from our staff if they think it makes sense for the county to get a little more organized and have businesses that are operating and filing tax returns, carry a license, whether it's at no fee or $25, whatever it is, to document a business that's existing in the unincorporated areas of the county.
Councilmembers have any other comments on any other non-agenda comments?
Yeah, I just would, oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No, no.
No, you go.
Yeah, okay.
Mine's short and slow, you know.
Yeah, mine is too. So Nation Ford High School, I do want to give a quick shout out. Over the weekend, they were at the National Rifle Championship through ROTC Shooting Competition and they won the national championships. Kudos to them and shout out to my daughter, which is on the team too, so. There you go.
My comment is, is during the budget, I would like for us to look in on the stipend on the increase form because I think if anybody deserves it, that they do, um, that'd be about all.
Anyone else?
Yes, so.
You already had one, sorry.
Well, I was commenting on this.
Yeah, can't do that, just kidding, go ahead.
All right, well, I got a whole list I'm gonna go over now then.
No.
All right, I'll limit it to two, all right, here we go. So during COVID, you all use virtual as a way for members to join the meetings. So just during the month of May, I'm out of town May 1st, which means I'm gonna miss a workshop and I'm gonna miss county council and I can't drive back. Then on the 23rd, I'm gonna miss a workshop. I didn't join council to miss meetings, not workshops, not county council meetings. We have a county ordinance that says that you can't join a meeting unless you're physically here. I would ask that we amend that ordinance to include virtual meetings, we can put a cap on it, doesn't really matter to me. But I think it should be open because plenty of us that are out of town and unable to meet a meeting, unable to be at a meeting, would attend probably via virtual. So I'd like to see us amend that ordinance to include virtual. Furthermore, I'll say our committee meetings, sometimes we have people that can't physically make it, but they could potentially make the meeting at work or somewhere else if their employer would allow it. So I, I think, I think we do need to incorporate virtual meetings into our meeting schedule or the ability to meet virtually, that's number one. Anything else, do you want comments or, I got one more I need to bring up.
You have the floor.
Okay, so we were on the phone today with a gentleman that has six hotels in York County, he's building two more. One of the issues he's having is, we have an ordinance that allows for industrial buildings to be built up to 60 feet. So when you're building a hotel, it's not just up to the hotel developer, owner, that's building the hotel, how they want to build it. It could be Hilton, it could be somebody else, Marriott, the saying, you have to meet this criteria in order to build this hotel. So 60 feet appears to be the mark that lets, that allows you to build a five-story hotel building instead of 50. So I would ask that council, ask planning and zoning to go back and review what you all, before I was on council, you all voted to approve for industrial sites up to 60 feet, that maybe we also include hotels to 60 feet so that we can get the types of hotels that we want in this county. Yeah, it's 50 feet now, or maybe it's 55, Jonathan, correct me, is it 50 or 55?
50, in all districts except for industrial, which is 60.
Right, and not to put you on the spot, but I will, do you think it makes sense for planning and zoning to review this and?
Right, this is typically our time just to make comments, so we don't usually engage.
All right.
Any other, any other comments?
I have.
Ms. Clonzer.
A plug. I would like for everybody to put it on your calendar to come to Fort Mill for the 14th Annual Strawberry Festival and partake of some of the best strawberries and around. It's a fun day, you have lots of food, fun. May 6th, May 6th, 14th Annual Strawberry Festival, Fort Mill.
Thank you ma'am, anyone else? All right, do we have a motion for executive session?
Yes, receipt of legal advice, litigation update, also contractual matter, five lane widening highway 557.
We have motion, is there a second? Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, we'll go straight into executive session. In a second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.